Oh, I like the spring and fall.
Well, we're just still going to have still. Well, you don't figure it out.
I don't know. When I called Arthur, I really needed him to come in. Because it was wrong on E again.
Yeah, I heard you say.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, that's good. You're smart. I know it's hard not to try and get these done.
So if you're going to be in here, you should cover part of them in the background.
Oh, is that what you want me to do instead of being over your office? I mean, that's fine with me.
Oh, we could.
I'd prefer to do it first, but I don't know how the council feel.
You're supposed to meet. I'm kind of. I'm trying to. Protect the police. So.
I just need.
Do you have your.
I don't have all my duties. But I know what we're doing, but I. Somewhere.
To somewhere. Well, do you want? How do you want to do this? Do you want to be in my office?
I just need. I'd rather be in here and just go to the podium and. Obviously, the. It's just question or report in the.
The agenda. Okay.
It just goes down.
Okay.
Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this. And under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For everybody in here, everyone else, please silence any devices that may interrupt the meeting. That includes me.
And Don's.
All right. This is the Warricka City Council meeting now be held on, finish up on January 21st at 6:30 now. This meeting will be agendized to allow council member staff and the public to participate. Meeting via teleconference. This is the government's executive order number N 2920. There will be no public access to the council chambers. Masks and physical distancing will be required. Members of the public may join via Zoom. Members of the public may also be remotely listened to and participate in the meeting via teleconference. If you wish to listen or participate in this meeting through teleconference, you can simply dial the number below. And ID number during this call, you may press nine to raise your hand to ask to speak during the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. This is a time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take no action during the public comment section of this meeting except to direct staff to prepare and report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is a time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers may press nine, like we said earlier. State your name, mailing address, so that city staff can respond to you in regard to the comments or provide you with information if appropriate. If you are not required to state, if you are not required to state your name and address if you don't desire to. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? It's not on the discussion already.
And for everyone on the phone, it is star nine, raise your hand. May I receive other comments at this time?
Great, thank you. Okay, number one, discussion possible action consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless the member of the council wishes to remove them, an item, discussion, or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A approval ratification of payments issued from January 1st, 2021 through January 10th, 2021. 20, oh, it says 2020, 2021, isn't it? Should be.
10:40, yeah.
So we need to make a correction on that. B approval of the minutes. Of meeting held on January 5th, 2020, again, it's 2021 again. Correct that also. Way full text readings of ordinances on the agenda. Ordnance shall be introduced and adopted by title. So unless the council has anything, and I'll ask the audience if they have any comments too before we go on any further.
Okay, so Debbie, did you have a question last week about anything?
Steve answered prior.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions here.
Okay, is there a member of the audience who would like to ask a question on these discussion items?
Okay, I will move that we accept with corrections.
Debbie.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, roll call, Mr. Steve.
Mayor for Tim Bear. Councilmember Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye.
Number two, COVID information. Is this starting off with you or is this you, Steve?
Um, this was in response to a request to try to have someone from public health come and give us an update. Uh, that is scheduled to be at your next meeting on February 2nd. Uh, so this is just information. That was available either through email or on their website. So it includes the. January 13th version of the vaccination plan and also information about the vaccine drive-through clinic. Tomorrow from 10 to 4.
Which is now a walk-up clinic.
It is a walk-in.
Because of the weather.
Oh, gotcha. I just like it that they're they're jumping.
Auxiliary, what do you call it? The big, the first big building on the right when you go in, the gate. Yes, in the armory.
I'm still thinking a little fast. People just need to plan on staying for obligatory 15 minutes.
Right.
Monitor the effects.
Yeah. So that's, I'd say I'm glad to see our county jumping in there and doing a. Mass. I don't know how many they predict to do. Did they, have anybody heard how many?
The original number that I heard was somewhere just north of 900.
Oh, wow. Holy.
So. But I don't know that to be. I don't know if I just heard that or if it's actually in one of the documents here.
Oh, wow. That's, that would be great. If we can get that many.
Yeah.
And they're doing them at the clinic as well. They've got appointments at the clinic.
Oh, okay. Good. I'm reading through all the different tiers and it's like us. Younger bucks have to wait a little while, but that's okay.
Yes, those are the best that are younger.
That's right.
An older buck or doe. They will give you the shot when they give it to.
Oh, okay.
Just so you know, my wife's younger, so I think I missed that one. You're not even old yet.
So it's like, I get my money. So this is just informational only.
Yes.
And like I said, if, uh, if you had questions and I could answer them, I, I would. If you have questions that you want to hear from the people who know, we'll have. Someone here in two weeks.
Thank you. Cool. Like I said, this thing, I mean, there's a lot of information that got sent out on this, so I think that's. It'll be nice to hear from somebody also. That would be good, very informational.
I have a better idea once people come because nationwide clinics have typically been poorly attended.
Yeah, that's so far.
That's why they, you know, that the people that are taking it, it's much less percentage than they thought it was going to be. That's why I know New York had to dispose and had to throw away several thousand.
Did they really?
Yes. Has a short shelf life from what I understand.
That's too bad.
Well, now they're going to be required to ship them if they're not using right away, ship them to somewhere else that's using them.
Yeah.
Yeah, problem is that just most, all states. People, a lot of people, when I say a lot, maybe two or three out of 10, maybe, I don't know, are, it's unsentimental, are saying, no, I'll wait, I'll wait.
We want to see how.
See how the reactions are going to happen.
They had over 2,500 in a drive-through clinic in Medford today, according to the news.
Nice, nice. Cool. Does anybody else have a comment on that? And then we will move on. Okay, well, number three, discussion possible action resolution of the city council of the city of Warricka approving the street closures and other requests associated with special events to be known as 2021 RTOPs is, are you starting this one off, Steve?
Yes, mayor members of the council, you've seen this a couple of times before, so I'll go through it briefly if you do have questions. I have Arthur up in the balcony as well as Matt Bray on, on Zoom. So this is for six different events, the first of which starts in May. There was a lot of discussion about the body painting events, which is the fifth event is a body painting event and the sixth event has a body painting component to it.
Join the meeting.
So. Some of the things that came up at the previous council meetings regarding that event were that the body painting events be held indoors. Warning signs regarding the nature of the event be placed at each location. Uh, there was a discussion of having opaque paper used to cover the windows and minors will only be allowed into the body painting events when intended by parents or guardians. There is also suggestion that not a lot of minors at all, but that was part of what went on. Just briefly, the. We're requiring the event sponsor to reimburse the city for our actual costs. There's a street closure plan that can be used for the events themselves. There's another street closure for a parade that's proposed in May. And of course, one of the things we do not know is the public health guidelines. May or may not be lifted enough for the events to take place. And so there is a provision in here that the events can be canceled with the, if, if they're not going to or not going to be able to meet those guidelines. I was asked if there is reinsurance required and there always is insurance required on the, on the events and generally speaking, we look for insurance to. To, I'm getting stuff from staffs to tell me whether I'm right or not. Generally, the insurance, we look at getting that about 30 days in advance.
Yeah, that's pretty standard procedure.
Right. I could go into more detail or have Arthur go into more detail, but I think that we've seen this a couple of times already and so.
And like I said, I think the biggest. Everything else, I think, as far as, I can't speak for the council, but I think the biggest one that we have was questioned on was the, it's the, my body canvas of that one there and. And I think, I don't know. And I think the rest of it, everybody was, was very satisfied with. Putting, you know, being presented that to us, what we've seen, and I think it looked, the rest of it looked really well. You know, another concern I think with the council was to make sure that businesses were very aware of what was going on, and I think that's getting covered as far as I know. The only, like I said, big question was the actual body exposure. I would like to make a proposal just to, just to bring this by what some council, they can, and we can all just have a discussion. I want also for Chris Tater to actually make a comment, I would like to just make this proposal to the council just to see what's acceptable, but we'll, like I said, I want Chris to speak on this too. You know, in regards to this, we wanted, obviously, the models to be, or to models to be held indoors. To be privately owned businesses. All these are, all these models will be. um to be privately owned businesses, all these are, all these models will be in privately owned businesses. There will be three by three, three foot by three foot warning signs placed at every point of entrance to this event. Paper on the windows, if, only if the, only if the businesses want that. I'm not proposing that, but if the businesses want that. No minors allowed unless accompanied by a parent or guardian. I would like to request a map of where the models would be at too, just so we have a heads up where the models would be located at. I don't know if you're catching this, are you catching this, Chris? Okay. Okay. Um, also on that map, I would like to see businesses that are, the private businesses that are letting the models be um doing artwork there. I'd like the, them to acknowledge that they know this by a signature form of some sort too. And last, I would like to see if the models do need to go outside of the privately owned businesses that would, there would be in this artworks being done on them. They are clothed before they go outside of these businesses, so that way there's no, no partially nude models in the streets. This, this is some of the basics that I would, I'm just proposing. Now, I'd like to hear from Chris at this point in time if she has something she wants to add to that, and then I would like to hear from the council also.
So as we've discussed before and as it was approved back in November, on November seventh, um actually twenty-first of two thousand nineteen, um, the signage is perfectly acceptable at all of the entrance points of the event. Um, a map of where the models and the artists are is something that is at every single art hop, there's a directory with every business that participates and who they have and what's going on in their business. Um, as far as business signatures, um, if you go back to the packets that I've uh proposed a couple of times, um the businesses, almost all of the businesses have signed so far, some of them I hadn't gotten to yet because of COVID. But if you look at the list, almost every one of them is signed. Um, models being clothed, um, if they leave the business, which some of them needs fresh air, I've mentioned this before. Even though it's a non-toxic paint, it's still up in your face, so they will need fresh air sometimes. And yes, they will be um robed if they do leave the building. Um, we do do a kind of a photo shoot with people who want to take pictures with the, the models and the artists. Um, that will be inside of a business, so it will not be out on the street or anything. Um, so that's limiting exposure. Um not sure if I'm missing anything, but um so, and as far as, as far as children coming to the event, they came with their parents last time. Um, and, you know, they watched it as a family, that's why they came down was just to meet the artists that they admire so much. So they came with their families. The artist, one of the artists, my main um featured artist, he actually went to the high schools and spoke. So they came to see him um and the other artists, so it wasn't and, and again, I can't stress this enough, this was not a lewd um display of bodies, this was a tasteful family event and like I've said before, we had two chambers full of people in support of the art hops. And letters and emails and phone calls and texts and all that that were sent to different council members um that I know of. So I know that the majority of the community supports it. There are always going to be somebody who doesn't agree with anything, I'm sure your jobs are the same. Um, so please keep it in mind that the majority of the, I mean, there were a lot of people. Old, young, children, adults, the demographic that spanned the community of the people that were down there was amazing. You didn't just have one type of group, you had many, many facets of our community. So please to keep that in mind um for the event. Um, I'm not, if there's any other questions I can answer, I'm kind of a little bit loopy right now, I'm tired.
Great, thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. Okay, does the council have some questions, comments, concerns we'd like to express?
I've, I've got a, this councilman McCoy, I've got a question. On the body painting event on page one of two, it says that opaque paper shall be used to cover the windows, E.G. butcher paper. And when you spoke, you said, uh, Mr. Mayor, that if the business so desired they could cover their windows.
Correct, that's, that's, that's my proposal.
Those are two different.
Correct, that's, that's, like I said, that's my own personal proposal, that it's not required that if the businesses want to do that, then if they can do that, obviously, and, and state whatever they want that on there, so.
Okay, I think that was a recommendation from the attorney, was it, wasn't?
No.
Said we had to do it.
I came up with it, the former.
Yeah, correct. Um, uh, so that, my other question is, I know Chris has talked to everybody, Chris, you, you need to not mistake our support, our support, we support the events, the council does. But there are times when we are called upon to make decisions on how far we can go with something in, in with what we're supporting. And so we, we support the, you know, I don't think there's a, one of the five of us that doesn't support it. However, there are times when you have to make changes. We, we have to, we have to accommodate certain things, so don't ever mistake that for not having support. Anything that we can get to bring um more people into this economy, you know, we want to do. And, and we, and I think all of us enjoy the different things that you've put on downtown. We enjoy the different things that the chambers put on downtown, you know, we enjoy those things, we love to see them. But there are times when things have to be tweaked a little, so that, that's, that's all I'm saying. Um, photos that are going to be taken inside the businesses, will those be done even if we're socially distancing still?
Lot of it is in September, so I'm hoping that we will be back to being able to be um in person again. Everything for this year is up in the air. Um, it doesn't look like May is gonna happen because um I know that cool April nights has already canceled their events for this year. Uh, I, I don't expect from the reports that I've seen on TV from the CDC and that type of thing. I'm not expecting to be able to get a clear until the fall. Um, but I'd like to have it ready to go. Um, at least definitely not May, but um at least have the have the approval again to go ahead with this so that um I can start scheduling. It's, it takes a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of contacting. Um, you know, I may be, if we're able to be in person again, I may be very late on getting anybody scheduled because it's this is right time.
If we're still under social distancing guidelines, assuming the president can get a hundred million Americans inoculated in a hundred days, that still leaves two hundred million Americans, two out of three, un-inoculated. Um, and by May. Uh, I guess my question is, if for some reason we are still um under a social distancing guideline, but we even say we have seventy or eighty million Americans inoculated, would you can, would you continue to have the pictures or would you say that's just an area that we can do everything else, but we can't do the pictures?
Well, if we're still under guidelines, we won't be having an event. So it's colored kind of null and void with the photos. I have to follow the CDC guidelines, just like any other event coordinator. So if we are not clear to do social events, the event won't happen at all.
Okay, so I see us being, I think, I don't, I don't see how we're gonna be out of this way, I mean, if you talk.
It's hard to say.
Yeah, if you look at what they're talking about on the news, it's, we're a year away.
I hope and pray that we can start getting some normality in this world, but
Yeah, I don't.
That's all we can do is hope and pray, people.
So, okay, and then you, I know that we have seen uh, a document where people, where you talk to people and they, like, some people signed off, uh, some people said, I don't sign things. Now, with that in mind, as I've talked to people on Minor Street, everybody's happy with it. But three of the seven people I talked to of businesses were not aware of the duration of each of the of the um events, they didn't bother, they just weren't aware. So have you, do you plan to probably go back and talk to the businesses again about it?
When I, I can do that again, yes, but when I went to each person, I did explain they were all three-day events. They each got a letter um with when I went here, they got a letter and I also verbally um explained that these would be three-day events now.
I'm just, I know after thirty years of education, I sent out lots of letters and talked to parents, but it always seemed like somebody didn't get it, you know? But, and then um if we were to do pay, the last thing I remember was paper on the business, was the opaque paper. I, I do not remember ever saying, I was talking about, it was that the owner could make the choice.
Like I said, that was, that's something I'm proposing because
Okay.
I feel it's adequate enough having the signage, um, the media attention that so the public knows through social media, through newspaper and advertisement that she's gonna be doing. Um, and keeping the models off the public streets. I feel it's enough to satisfy the public and the concerns of the public, I would say. So what are the best, we're gonna get, we're gonna get people that are not gonna agree with that, I, I, I get that, and I know I'm gonna get a lot of phone calls.
Well, and I've gotten, uh, just like I've gotten letters that Chris has sent in support, I've got eight or ten that are, would like to see it happen, but they just want it covered.
Yep.
Um, okay, where are we looking at? What are the venues where the, where we have um painting of the body?
Oh, she's gonna get that to us.
Yeah, what the locations, I'm saying.
Oh, see, cause I would, I would have to know what that was gonna be before I would vote today on whether to cover or not cover windows. I'm just gonna say that, I, I, I would abstain from voting then because I can't, until, you know, until we know where they're going.
Uh, and I, I understand that, but I, I feel that we can get, and we can put a stipulation if there's something weird, are you concerned of a weird location or something, is that what you're?
Something where I know it's not going, where I don't know where it's going, I'm, I'm, you know.
So Chris, do you know the, the locations of the, of the body art uh, buildings, the private buildings that are gonna be performed, forming these artworks?
At this time, since I haven't been able to schedule anybody, no. Um, but I'm assuming it's going to be roughly the same places that they were last time, which is Bella Arts. Um uh, that'll be my shop now, since I'm gonna be on Minor Street, there'll be various places like that. Um.
Where, where is your shop at? Last time I, I thought you were on, yeah, she's in the old Black Spire School when she moved.
So the directory will state where the, the models are. Um, there'll be warnings on every entry and there'll be mass media, social media, newspaper, radio, all of that. So if people still decide to come down to the event after knowing what the event contains, I kind of think that's on them, I mean, that's a responsibility, if you don't like what the event is, then don't come. I mean, it's plain and simple, we, we do that, you know, every other event, if you don't, aren't interested in it, then people don't go. And that's plain and simple, and they don't have to complain because they didn't go, you know, they didn't have to see it.
Every other event, Chris, is not painting a new body, there's, there's. What's that?
It's partial nudity, it's not, the nipples and genitals will be covered.
Yeah, well, they're gonna, yeah, no, I, I realize that, but I'm saying there's, it's not, the others are, don't come anywhere close to that, so that's why you get such a, you know.
No, I understand your concerns.
Yeah, well, I'm just, it's just, it's not concern, it's a fact, so. Without knowing, I can tell you right now, without knowing the uh where they're gonna be, I, I would not, I would, I would just, I would, I don't have enough, so I vote no. And that's what, this, that's what we were taught when we went to League of, you know, you don't abstain. If you don't have enough, you vote no, so I, I could not support it without more information.
But I, I feel myself, as long as we know ahead of time and ample enough time that, well, are the locations, and I'm okay with it, but that's, that's what the rest of the council decided to.
But we don't vote on other things, there are other things that we vote on that if we were to vote on them without the whole thing, it could be disastrous, whether it's financial or, or whatever, so.
So the only thing you're concerned with is the location, even though we know it's going to be
On Minor.
On Minor Street and inside a business with permission.
Well, well, I'll be very clear, I'm not going to vote yes or no. I mean, I mean, yes, on something where I don't know where it's taking place. That's, I'm not gonna give an ignorant vote, no. That's not how my mama raised me and it's not how, not what school taught me. You vote when you have all the facts.
I guess to me, we, I have enough facts, that's.
I don't.
I understand what your concerns.
I, I don't have enough facts.
Okay. Joe?
Now I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Paul?
Any comment? Do you have any comments on this, Joan?
I'm, uh, well, I think all of you have seen the letters from people um that, that have concerns and there have been also some emails. I know that Pastor Tim Nielsen sent us, and he is an artist as well as a pastor. And he said he didn't have uh any problem with the events going forward. He just felt that, yes, that the windows should be covered, at least part, part way. He said that when he was in an art school, that whenever they would have children in there and he was in a life, what do they call it, lifestyle? No, that, a, a, a class where you sketch nude people, that they were covered at all times unless they were being sketched. But that children were not allowed in that area of the college while the nude pa- uh nude painting was going on. So his suggestion was just exactly what's on here, the staff suggestion, which was to um uh, you know, to have the event indoors in a private business, have the opaque paper, you know, at least halfway up or whatever uh, for children, uh, and then if children do come, then they come with their parents. In other words, parents give the permission for them to come. His concern was that from their school, that there were some kids that came into a business that they go to after school and were kind of shocked, you know, by what they saw, and he didn't want that to happen again. So signage is good, the paper is good, um, locations on Minor Street. Chris, you said it's gonna be pretty much where it was before, and that's fine with me. I mean, you know, I know the locations, which is Bella Arts, and I did not know you were going on Minor Street, that's great news. So you're gonna go right next to the new boutique, right? There's a little boutique there and, and that a lot of, some of the other businesses where it was are closed, I believe. But you've had the businesses signed off on it and uh, you know, as long as these rules are followed, I guess I just Mr. Mayor, no offense, I just, um, I, I feel that if, if you leave it open, too open, then, you know, it's going to change um how the event takes place for the paper. So.
Oh, awesome.
I'd just like to comment on the um Joan, you made a good co- uh, point about the life drawing um with children not being in there because that is absolutely nude drawings. Um, and they are nude, completely nude, these are not, they are covered. So there's a big difference, um, a very big difference. Um and we've talked about this before, but um there's a bit of censorship that's happening and it if people are coming down to the event, they know what they're coming to. Um, you know, they don't usually come to a bit, I mean, I have people from different states saying they're coming to this event when it happens because different states saying they're coming to this event when it happens because they're so excited, um. Very shocked that a, um, in their words, very conservative community is having something so amazing here. They were, um, they were bummed out that they didn't make it and know about it in time for them to come down. These are people from Oregon, there's people from, um, I just lost the name of it. Um, anyway, there's multiple states that, of people that wanna come up, there's people from San Diego, San Jose, Sacramento area that wanna come up, people I don't even know, but they're contacting the artists and telling them, when you guys are there, make sure you let us know. Um, that's hotel stays, that's eating in our restaurants, that's spending money in our boutiques and, you know, spend, you know, buying gas, that's, you know, I, and I connect with not just Wyrica, I take people out to the valley, I take them to Mount Shasta, you know, the, the artists, so it's spreading the love as far as bringing people to our community in our county. So I won't, you know, please keep that in mind, and again, they are covered. This is not nudity. I've given the California Penal Code that all the body painters, all the event planners use for California multiple times. That is the penal code that they use so that they know that they are legal. Um, it's the penal code that, um, you know, the cities that, that hold these events use to make sure they're in compliance. So, um, there is nothing overly or new that we're doing, it's just new to our area. And I can't stress enough, I know you say you've, you've received letters and, you know, we're, we're listening to this pastor, which that's his opinion, um, but there were also many letters, and I have copies of some of them that were sent to me, and emails and stuff that were sent to me, people in support, and I know they were sent to you, um, as a counsel, um. But I'd also like those to be, to weigh as heavily as the complaints, because there were a lot of, a lot of support.
Oh, we didn't get those. I don't have any of those. We've got, what, six or eight letters here that are all in opposition?
It didn't happen this year, they happened right after the event, or af- when I was doing the next one, when the two councils, the two times the council, uh, was full of people.
And it wasn't one pastor, it was two, but still, um, yes, we need to see both sides. So maybe we should enable it.
We're not, um, I, I know that our, uh, acting chief is on, we're not worried about penal code, that's, that has nothing to do with it. Um, I think the law is changing as quickly as, as the rest of the United States is changing on, on, uh, how, how sex and sexual things play into a crime anymore, um, or, or the human body, so.
Paul, I, I, I know this comes up a couple of times with you, but, um, this is not sex, it has nothing to do with sex. Nothing in the event is sexual at all. This is body used as a canvas. It is completely art, nothing, and it's actually against the penal code if, I mean, you could be sued if you have a very sexual oriented painting when you are having a non, you know, it, it doesn't cover things that are sexual. So, I can't go out and say, you know, this event is covered by Penal Code 314, and then have a completely nude person or at one of the painters painting something lewd on someone's body. Again, I had the painters know that this is a family event, they complied, um. Everything was, was absolutely modest. They were covered, they were painted, um, the artists actually painted, put a, put the base layer on as fast as they could before any of the public was there, they were already starting to paint their images on the bodies before the public came, for the most part. Um, so, I can't stress enough that this is not a sexual event.
I don't think any of us are questioning that. I don't think any of us are questioning that the body paint was put on as quickly as possible, that's not what we're questioning. We're, we're not questioning that, we're just trying to decide what age groups it's appropriate to come and see, because we do know that there are kids that are out and about without their parents, um.
Well, that's what we're proposing.
Yeah, anybody, anybody that they can't be there. See that in Wyrica is blind, or, or they've got their blinders on. I think we're just trying to make it as fair as we can for people that are coming, people that might show up, and for the models and the artists themselves.
Well, I think, like I said, the part of this proposal is they can't be in there without the company of a, a parent or guardian, they're underage, so. Um, you know, the other thing, like, it's, this is tough, it's, it's a tough topic for all of us, I, I get that. Um, for me, it's, you know, I was raised as conservative as you can get. Um, but I also was raised loving, and I know we all love art, don't get me wrong, I did a lot of art, I, I've done art years and years and years and years. I view this as such a, a perfect art form. And my wife and I both watched on the TV this Body Wars, we watch it, it's, it's awesome, I've never heard of it, so. Yeah, we watch it, and it's great, it's been, it's neat what they can do, it's amazing what some of these artists can do. But it's, it's how you view it, and there again, this is also, in my viewpoint, this is also an opportunity for parents to be able to express to their children that this is an art form, this is not sex or not, or any of these things, that this is an art form and that body is an art. God created our bodies as a perfect work of art, and this is, this also goes into that. That's my view on it, and I just wanna state that. I'd like to also hear from Cory and Debbie a little bit on this too, just so we have any questions that need to be stated on, on all this, because this is, it's important to the community, it's a real important.
Want me to go first? Uh, I'm comfortable with approving it with the conditions that you outlined.
It's not a motion, that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
Let me, let me.
I just want that clear.
But the ones in the paper that are printed, right? The ones from staff, Debbie?
Uh.
I've heard it both from Chris and, and from Dwayne. Not talking about sex, but I am talking about we are a sexualized society. Um, in, in case our chief can come on, one of the, uh, our acting chief, one of the biggest things we deal with, and that I dealt with as a principal, are, uh, sexualized kids who, to no fault of their own, Chris and Dwayne, became sexualized. Um, I am not saying that this does that, what I am saying is, is this what the city, is this, see, here's the deal. If you, if I want my five-year-old to see it, I have no problem taking her in. I don't have a five-year-old, she's thirty now. But I've taken her to things before where we saw the human body as an art form. Where we saw it both alive, and we saw it both deceased.
Right.
We saw it peel off, like in that big thing that traveled all throughout the United States with a thousand pieces of the human body. That's okay. What I'm saying is, do we give the parents the choice to do that, or do we make that, or does the city gonna go ahead and make that choice for them?
That's what the signage is about.
That's what signage and, and the, and the.
Why do you say that isn't giving them information?
The signage, signage is a warning. If, 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 if they see the signage, okay, and they still, you know, wanna walk the kids through, for whatever reason, they can protect them by having the paper up. Okay, so, I, I mean, and, and, so anyway, but my thing is on the, I heard sexual, this is not sexual, I never said it was sexual, I didn't say that.
I'm sorry.
So please don't put that in my mouth.
I wasn't trying, I was.
Well, but I've heard it twice, and I don't like it put in my mouth, and, but what I'm gonna tell you is that um, there are a lot of people that can't tell the difference. And I'm gonna tell you that.
So you.
A lot of people tell me rape is a crime of sex. Rape's not a crime of sex, it's a crime of violence, and it's a crime of control. Am I incorrect on that, Assistant Chief?
You're right.
Thank you. So, I'm just saying, you know, if, if we wanna go ahead and do it, that's fine, we go ahead and do the vote, I know there's a motion, but.
I haven't made a motion yet.
Okay, okay, but, but what I'm saying is, let's, let's, let's stop beating around the bush here, let's talk about what it is, let's not talk about what it isn't. We can talk about what it is an all day, you know, I can listen to the Democrats or Republicans talk about that all day, and this makes me want. Yes.
I'm not trying in order yet, but, um, I just wanted to make, I would like to make a clar- or, uh, ask a clarification question after you're done with. Of course, anything you would like to add?
Um. One thing, I, I, I think, this is, this is not new, this has been going, this is, body art has been going on for a very long time, another year, it's, it's new to Wyrica, so the shock value comes a little extreme, in my opinion, because it hasn't been exposed here. Art has been around, they've been doing it in San Francisco, there's been major discussions, I've read, you know, definitions. Uh, anyways, I read upon it, and I think that, it's just, um, so my question would be, 'cause, so she's asking for a street closure. If she wasn't asking for a street closer, closure, and say Bella Artworks wanted to have this artist in their private business, and have it in their window, have the artist in their window, we don't have a right to censor them to do that. So somebody who goes up and down Minor Street, or walking on a normal Friday night, there would be no warning signs, they, they're allowed to have that.
That's true. That's, that was my expression, I'm saying it's a private business, these, these models will be held in a private business, 'cause there is some things on that that we don't have control, where they are legally covered, which they are legally covered, then we, as I, Cory stated, that we do not have a say, um, we can protest as much as we want, and maybe raise a ruckus, and that expression, but it's, if they wanted to have a, a live model in their, in their building, like you just stated, then I don't see where we can stop that.
And I can argue that point, and Cory's on two different fronts, but I'm not going to, out of, out of sense of time, 'cause I, I could argue that, I, with you, with a very cogent and valid argument.
Lost.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that this isn't allowed in Ashland and Medford, is that true?
I don't have any of that.
That's what I've heard.
And Ashland has passed an ordinance, I know that's different from when I moved here in nineteen eighty-six, in Ashland, you could go, when I went up, you could go body painted and things at Thanksgiving, or, uh, Halloween and other things, and you cannot, and you could go topless and things, you cannot do it now.
You can go to nude.
They allow nude on weddings, yeah.
Till they change, they change that ordinance, yes. Yeah, you can literally go completely nude in Ashland till they change that ordinance.
They change, right.
That's not a controversy here, that. So.
I, I, I do want to establish the fact that, um, I am comfortable moving forward with this, with the restrictions we have in place suggested by the staff, however, I, I still think we need to review it every year, because if there's a problem, I would like the option of correcting it in one manner or another.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We don't review it every year, they have to come to us each year and review it, so there's not an annual review.
Right.
It always has to be.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the annual review would assume that we're passing an ordinance, we are not passing.
No, 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 no.
Correct.
I get that.
So, um, there would be appropriate now for me to just mention a couple things?
You go.
Okay.
You bet.
The, um, there are four bullets under body painting in the Stafford Court. Those four bullets are reflected in Item G in the resolution, it's on page, about halfway down, page two or three. So, um, there were two other things that came up tonight, one was a map of, uh, the models, and, and really, it's a map of the locations and the models as well. And that is something that is usually prepared immediately before the event, uh, for a lot of things, but in this case, it happens to be models. There was also discussion about, uh, clothes before going outside businesses, and I think there's general agreement between the applicant and the council that that's the case. I just wanna point out, it, it's not in Item G, I don't know that it needs to be in Item G, but I just wanna make sure it's clear what is in Item G, and then if there's the, the suggestion, I believe that, that you approached, uh, would require to have one clause taken out of Item G if you were introducing that as a motion, so. Just wanna make sure that people, uh, that, that, that there's a, there's understanding what people are voting on, if indeed there is a, a motion, so I just wanted to clarify, uh, that, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Council. Where do you wanna go from this?
Um, Mr. Mayor, would, would you be interested in going ahead and having a vote on the May, June, July, and August events, and then have more discussion on September and October? 'Cause I don't think there's any problem with the others.
Well, Chris was talking about perhaps she's not doing some of those either, so.
And she, and she has to book her artist, we can't keep dragging this out, and, you know, we'll be here, we need to make decisions.
It needs to happen tonight, this is.
So it makes a difference whether she books an artist if there's paper on the window or no paper on the window?
Well, as it's written, it's supposed to have paper, Item G, opaque paper shall be used.
I understand, I'm, I'm asking a simple question. Chris, if we ask, if we were to require that you put paper on the window, would you just go, I know you've talked about moving it, would you just go ahead and move it out of the city, or, or cancel it, or how, what, how would that affect it?
I think with putting paper on the window, you are limiting the public who's coming down to see this event, because not everyone can fit in a building. Um, that was why I wanted the street closed, because we had so many people standing around the windows and crowded in the buildings, that it was becoming a safety issue, because I was having to corral people back up on the sidewalks and have them move out, and then they couldn't see. Um, you know, so having it open so people can see the, the models, um, is beneficial to the, to the models, the artists, the community, and the event. Taping up the windows is gonna, is, is not only setting a bad precedence for what this is, which is art, taping up the windows gives it an implication that this is something dirty, and it's not. It also limits people who can see the work, and it creates a question in the businesses.
Okay.
No, it does not limit the event, but it hinders its quality.
Okay, so let me, let me go back to the question. Does it make a difference if we decided to put paper on as opposed to no paper? You've talked about just taking the events and moving them to another city, I know that. Does that mean that you would probably up and take this to another city, or does that mean you would keep it, or you would just shut it down? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Um, I'm not prepared to answer that question yet, because I'm not, um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, if the community, if the businesses are okay with having their windows all taped up and looking that way, um, to have a body painter in there, then I'll go with, with that, but, um, you know, most businesses don't want their windows all taped up with butcher paper.
We don't know who the businesses are right now either, correct? We only know your business, and we know Bella Artworks. Those are the only two we know of, six or five?
I don't, um, why, I don't know, because I don't know how many artists I will get, and I don't know how many businesses will be involved, because there's mostly different businesses now than what participated last year. Businesses that they're moved or closed down.
I, I just, I don't, I, I don't know enough to, to be able to vote yes, so, that just, that just, I thought we were, she might have been a little farther along, I thought we might have known.
Well, it's tough to be, it's, like I said, it's tough for her to be further along until she gets an, uh, approval, and then she can go out and find these artists, and, and tie those artists into this event, until then, you know, she's can't give a promise that she can't necessarily keep, so. It's pretty tough to, to tie down a business, or tie in a business, if she doesn't know how many models, and how many, excuse me, how many artists that she's going to get for this event. That's my thing, it's like, how, how can you, you can't prepare for something that you have unknowns on, so.
Well, you can.
It, it cost me an immense amount of money, um, to reserve artists.
Well, we popped six different businesses, and we say, you know, would you be interested, yes, would you be interested, yeah, and you always have a couple extra, I mean, that's how it was when I was a private sector, when people came to the business, and when I was, you know, younger, my younger years, and they come. And when I was, you know, younger, my younger years and they come and say, we'd like to do this. We're going to do this treasure hunt. We want to know if you might be interested in being involved. Yes, I would. No, I wouldn't. So, yeah.
So we're back to where we go with counsel. Can the mayor make a proposal or make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I make a motion that we pass this as I presented and.
For, for clarity, that is, would be to have the restrictions in place except the opaque window, except. Opaque paper shall be used to cover the windows, E.G. butcher, butcher paper. You would be proposing to eliminate that.
Correct.
From the resolution.
And everything else is, I think, follows what you guys basically had already. Models cannot be out on the streets without being robed or clothed. That the signage, the only thing we added was bigger signage to this also. But yeah, it sounds like everything else is there.
So, so I don't have the, I, I know that that's our intent is that they, they go out, if they go outside the business, they'll be. I believe the term that, that the applicant used was robe.
Correct. Robed or clothed.
So, so that's our understanding. I think she's. Okay, that's not in, in G. I just want to put that up, but.
And then it notes that minors will be accompanied by parent or guardian. So I'm going to assume.
Yeah.
It's, they're gonna, they're, they're, that somebody's going to be able to check that to make sure that they're with their parent or with a legal guardian.
Okay.
I don't know.
That would be a question of the applicant.
Let me ask you a question. So then what we do is we, we ask them how they're going to ascertain that in each of the venues. Is that what you're saying?
Right. I'd say that we're, staff will not be enforcing that. That would be something that.
Yes. But we would be liable for blowback. Staff would. Okay. I want to make, I want to make clear. I want to be clear.
You're wording me. I hear that.
Yeah. I'm, I don't, I'm not an attorney, but I slept in the Hall of the Inn last night.
So I have a question. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Well, I was going to say I'd like to have a substitute motion or one to consider first that we approve. The first four. The cultural fusion and may chalks a lot in June nonsense and necessity in July, oh natural in August. Approve those, have that going forward and then have discussion on the last two.
You already made the motion.
All the substitute motion, Corey, and if I get a second, then we can vote on that first.
Yes, we have a motion, a second, no substitutes. We have a motion on that seconds. Substitute. We don't have a second one. Is that correct, counsel? That's correct. Okay. Steve, will you do roll call?
Now, wait a minute. What are we voting on? Are we voting on your motion?
We had a motion and a second on my motion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The vote would be on the main motion.
Correct.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Hi.
City Council member, Smith Freeman.
No.
The Councilor McCoy.
No.
City Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye.
Yeah, I'd like some clarification from Chris.
Okay.
My Mike, Chris, how will, how will you, I was the one last year. Steve and I actually stood over at Liberty Arts. And talked about it. How will you enforce the? Uh, making sure that whoever is there is with a parent or a legal guardian.
The only way that I can is if I see a child unaccompanied, I will have them. Call their parent and have them come get them. Or if their parent is there, I will have them. I will escort the child to their parent.
Okay. And, and you'll know all the kids?
Of course not.
Okay. So how are you going to get them? I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to get to their parent. Or call their parent if we don't know who they are. Who do we know they're calling? Who do we know we're taking them to? Does that, how many did you have to do on, on last year's? None?
None.
Okay. And how many did you question were with a legal parent or guardian? Did you, that you in your mind questioned?
None. Most, all, all kids that I saw were with, with an adult.
Okay. Well, with, with an adult is different than with a parent or guardian. Right?
I, I can't, I can't enforce them with birth certificates or anything like that. If they're with an adult. That is all I can do. I can't ask them. You know, I can't go into all their personal things. If they're there with an adult, they are accompanied by an adult. That's all we're asking.
I have a solution. We need to change that motion to say by an adult, not a parent or guardian, by an adult. I will change the motion.
You can't. Has to change.
amended and now would have to be by the motion. So what are you presenting? Let me get it clear.
I would like to amend the motion to say minors will be allowed in the body painting event while accompanied by adults.
Okay. Like that motion then with that.
I made the motion.
Well, I, I have to.
No, you don't have to make the motion.
I have to agree upon it because I'm the one that made the original motion.
You don't have to agree upon it. I can make the motion. I didn't bring mine.
I think we've had that correction before.
I'm trying to figure out the.
Do we have our rules of, I didn't bring mine.
I don't have my binder here.
Rules of order.
So, so there's, there's actually probably more than one way to do this. But the easiest way to do this.
Let's do it the easiest way.
Is probably, I'm not sure what it's called in Rosenberg's rules of order, but. It would be a reconsideration of the motion.
Okay.
With that change.
Okay.
Now, interesting enough, if we do it that way. Given how people learn less, I would maybe, although again. It, the, the suggestion may be from the losing side to amend the motion, make it more.
Liz, do you have Rosenberg's rule there in the city hall?
Actually, I know this part because I needed it a couple of times and we can do anything we want to it. As long as we don't move on to another agenda item.
But he, but the mayor doesn't have, the person who made the. Liz, can you hear me?
I, so I guess, okay. If there's confusion on this, if. To move forward, I'm okay with that as long as the council's okay with that.
Paul, I thought you had to move to reconsider. Is that what you're doing?
I want to see the, the, it's, it's listed in the rulebook.
Well, it's one way to do it. See, you have an action that's already taken and I don't, you know. I try to avoid Robert's rules of order and I haven't read Rosenberg's in probably over two years.
Well, but we, we operate under Rosenberg's, not Robert.
That's correct.
We should.
So I, without. Like I said, there's, there's two ways to do it. One would be reconsideration. That's, that's the easiest one because then all I have to do is, is do. One, one vote and then at the end of the day, there'll be. You know, it was passed and asked for reconsideration. It was passed again with this language change. Basically, we're taking out parents or guardians and inserting adults. Yeah. The other way you could do it, and I'm not sure that it's actually by Rosenberg's is. To make a motion to modify the last action.
Okay.
To take out the words parents or guardians and put in adults.
So can we do that? That suffice?
The tricky part of that is that then I don't know which action passes the resolution.
Well, then do the simple one.
If you do the reconsideration, it's very clear that that. Passes that.
Why? Let's do the reconsideration. If that's legal, then let's do the reconsideration.
Okay. And then I think that someone on the. Someone on the, it's always written this way, but someone on the winning, the, the side that.
Yes.
Prevailed has to ask for the reconsideration or accept the reconsideration.
So I, I accept the reconsideration.
Yes.
The change.
Yeah.
And do we vote on it again?
The motion to amend. The motion to amend takes the basic motion that is before the body and seeks to change it in some way.
Correct.
Rosenberg doesn't delineate on who does that motion or who seconds or anything like that. Motion is what you're talking about, right?
Actually, the substitute motion would not be, it could be because it's already passed.
Which one are you talking about then?
Usually it's called a, a motion for reconsideration. Is that the? It doesn't, if you're all okay with it, we can do it either way. It's just that.
I'm looking, yeah. Thank you, Liz. That motion is not listed in Rosenberg's, what you're talking about so far. What did you call it again? A motion for what?
Motion for reconsideration.
Okay. Special and unique motion that requires a bit of explanation. Requires a majority vote to pass like other guard writing motions, but there are two special rules that apply. First. Is a matter of timing. A motion to reconsider must be made at the meeting where the item was first voted upon, which we are.
Correct.
A motion to reconsider made at a later time is untimely. Second, a motion to reconsider may be made only by certain members of the body. Accordingly, a motion to reconsider, they made only. By a member who voted in the majority on the original motion. So have to made by one of the three of them. If such a member has a. Yeah, that's fine then.
The motion for reconsideration of this, I accept that.
Okay. And I'm going to clarify just for the record that that is to change the last line in item G on the resolution. To leave parents or guardians. And put in, I put accompanied by adults. That's not the right way. Accompanied by an adult.
An adult. Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Very good. So I, I understand the motion, Mayor.
Yes. Okay.
So.
Do we need to have a little call on this again too?
Who, who seconded the motion?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. So on the motion for reconsideration.
I, I'm just uncomfortable with our liability.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll do a roll call then. Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Aye.
Uh, city council member, Smith Freeman.
No.
Uh, city council member McCoy.
Nay.
The council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye.
Or Winnie, one of the other nay.
All right. Carried with the reconsideration.
First reconsideration motion then.
I know you're laughing about it, Debbie. It's deep pockets and when you've been in government for thirty plus years, you know that people sue for the strangest things.
No, thank you for that clarification. Alrighty. Let's move on to number four. Special possible action authorize the city manager to execute consultant agreement with Adams Ashby Group. For grant writing for the Warricah Volunteer Fire Department, new fire station project. And is this starting off with Chief Lemus? Or is this?
It can. Do you want to start that? You want me to? Okay. So we had talked about this item previously when it was a request for proposals. We have received the proposal back. We had a committee that reviewed them, including the chief and I. Cindy and Rena. Okay. We selected, we received two proposals. We selected this one. We thought they were. I think both of them could have done the, the project, but we thought this one was better qualified. To what our needs were in terms of a small city looking for a fire station. So was that what I think you wanted to?
Just that I would say that if you've been to the station, you've all been there. You've seen it. You know that it's in a position where you're all in support of that. I know. This is a huge step in the right direction and having read the proposals and researched them thoroughly, I would say that this, this. Adams Ashby, which is the one we selected, would be a great way for us to get into the initial stages, which would be the planning grant. And it's a great way to get us there. So. Because of their experience and the experience they have with both grant writing and also with administering of the grant. And their experience with fire stations period. I'm full supportive of that RFP being from out of that.
So I just wanted to mention that this is a team effort. We, we drew from all the different disciplines as I, I mentioned. So we have finance and CDBG, fire and unskilled labor here. And we expect the, the requests or the notice of funding availability has not been issued yet. But we do expect that it will be by the end of the month.
Oh, good.
It's, that's the state. So we're not sure, but that's what we expect. And then it would be due in April. So we would like to get the consultant on board as quickly as possible. Initial work is the preparation of the application. Should the application be successful. Then at that point, we would also move forward with that same consultant negotiating. So that we, but we have complied with the rules under the community development block grant program so that we can. Meet the selection guidelines both for. Well, they don't care about who prepares the application, but to implement the application.
Yeah.
As well.
No, I, I think we can, anything we need to get ball rolling because we got to get something happen. We don't want to get. Pardon my expression, to not get caught with our pants down like we do with the police station. So. We need to get things rolling as quick as possible to make sure that we have adequate. Fire safety in our city first and foremost, and whatever that takes, as long as we can afford it and can get moved forward and we need to do it. So. Does the council have any other questions? Anything to add, Chief?
Oh, I just, like I said, this is something that's been a long time coming and I was very excited when I read the proposals that. I felt that, you know, we had some good candidates from that. I, I know we picked. Just my, my instincts, I guess, take over, but their, their.
I think you have good instincts.
It was very thorough. Their application was very thorough.
Alrighty. What is, wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. The recommended motion that we authorize the city manager to execute. A consultant agreement with Adams Ashby Group for grant writing for the Warricah Volunteer Fire Department, new fire station project.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. All right. We have a motion by Jones Smith Freeman and a second by Paul McCoy. Please do roll, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Aye.
City council member, Smith Freeman.
Aye.
The council member McCoy.
Aye.
City council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye. All right. Great. Next step we can do. Thank you so much. All right. On to a new topic, number five, which is discussion possible action continuing of urgency ordinance number eight fifty five.
Um, I think, Mayor, that we discuss probably what we would discuss under this item under item number two.
Okay.
So with that, I would recommend that we continue the urgency ordinance eight fifty five as a pandemic is. Pandemic is ongoing. And we'll be already tested.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman McCoy. I'll make the motion for continuation of urgency order number eight five five.
Awesome. Have a motion by Paul McCoy, a second by Corey Middleton. Roll call please, Mr. Baker.
Mayor Pro Tem Barrett.
Aye.
City council member, Smith Freeman.
Aye.
City council member McCoy.
Aye.
City council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye. All right. Carry it on again. Thank you. All right. Number six, discussion possible action, adopt resolution of the Warricah City Council approving the author is a, authorizing. The questions. Question of equipment of execution of all necessary documents for acquiring equipment for. Warricah Volunteer Fire. This would be Mr. Chief again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A member of the council, you may recall. Just recently that we came before you with some issues we had with other apparatus. And gave us the go ahead and go ahead and surplus that. So to fill that position, what we have done in. Behind the scenes, been working on replacement. So we came up with what we feel is a, a great solution. An apparatus is very versatile. and we're recommending the purchase of a pair of straight liner three thousand gallon water tender. We've never had one in the fleet before, but it's been pretty obvious that we've had such fire and we've experienced even structural fires within city limits where hydrants were less than desirable and we could have, we could have done some good with water tender in the right position.
I know around here a few years ago that happened up on the hill, a citizen that was building a house and he was up on top of the hill and it burnt down completely that house did. I was actually working on it at the time and because of that situation that you're saying, we couldn't, couldn't do anything about it. Unfortunately, so this, I think, is.
Well needed.
We will have things that we, you know, a fire rated pump, so we would be able to, you know, demonstrate, you know, through the pump test when it's purchased or when it's being constructed, that it can keep up with, you know, what we need on, on the fire ground. So that, that right there alone was, you know, critical in determining, you know, what we need to fill. Plus, our ISO rating would be affected, you know, by that. Like I said, the versatility is, you know, even better than that, even better than what we initially anticipated.
So who, who, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Who, before, who have we drawn from to get something like this as far as what other fire department? Was Cal Fire, was it, who, who did we get? Have we been?
Water tenders currently come from Montague, have one, Salt Lake has one, on the fires we had behind River King and those two fires on the hill were, we paid them a ransom. And glad to do it, because I stayed overnight and we fed all the lines that we needed to, you know, put out on the spots that went into the night and the next morning, so.
There we go.
So other, other volunteer departments that have, at the time, probably had a greater need. We just had never explored it because we always had hydrants and it was just something that, you know, just wasn't in the mix. But after talking to, you know, members and, you know, the, the officer board, we realized that, you know, it's something we need to look into because we could use it many, many times over. It has hoes, it has all the things we have on other apparatus, but carries water. It's the equivalent of having sometimes three to five engines, you know, as far as the water they carry on the engine. So we have that in one package, makes that much more sense.
Huge, yeah. Now, does it have to be stored in a, in a particular location because of the water being in it?
It'd be at station, which is temperature.
So we're saying.
We have it there now for the same reason, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah, it has to have.
Yeah. Makes sense, yeah, it doesn't want nothing freezing.
No.
Is it, is it brand new?
Yes, it's a brand new apparatus.
Okay, brand new, I missed that part. I'm trying to find it.
Are you going to buy one of the ones you see, you know, through their log? Now, this is, this is built by fire, one of the largest manufacturers in the country. They build these all the time. It's a stock chassis with all the equipment added on. Which means this, this is time critical too, and we tried to rush this only so that we could get this delivered by before this coming fire season.
Oh, I got it.
And it still has everything you wanted.
That makes sense. How long does it usually take?
We did a custom type situation, it would be a year.
Oh, wow.
So this is something that was, you know, in the queue, they had them available and we were just upgraded to a larger power plant, larger engine. And from there, it was pretty simple. We went through all the specs and approved all the specifications that we wanted. At this point, we're, we're ready to move. I understand it is a lot of money, but it's also, from what I told you before, it was, you know, to replace four fifteen and the truck at the same time, that was something we were trying to avoid anyway. It's a few years earlier than what we, what we had hoped, but we're also in a good position to do this now and not prolong any further out, you know, or to coincide with the plan that we had when we started the whole measure age process.
Yeah, that's a key thing, it's not measure age that we need to take considerate. Debbie, I think you had a question.
Yes. What about the personnel, any additional training needed?
No, it's still, it's just like we would have for, for the other apparatus, although we do have several members that have a class A license. We would, you know, probably utilize them initially and then get everybody else trained up because you all heard how a water truck is a little different, how it handles. That's going to take some time, we're not going to cut anybody loose until they've gone through all the proper. You call it additional training, yes, because it is different. Because you're carrying three thousand instead of five hundred or seven fifty, so makes a big difference. But we have, we added additional briefing packages in there, which is a safety feature. And the way they designed these, they're not electrical, they're built with all these criteria that, you know, as far as the shifting of the water. They have baffles in there, you know, to prevent the overload to one side or the other, front or back. Yes, that's a good question, we're going to have some, some extra training, but it's also going to be, you know, it takes one person instead of having to crew three or four, so that also helps.
It's in-house training, right?
Correct, it is. We're going to put folks through, as soon as we can, some driver operator safety courses as well. They're going to have a C O S, so as soon as we can get people on the road, we know if we're going to have them there.
Jerry, did you utilize a purchasing consortium to, to get this truck?
Correct, yeah, we went through Sourcewell. In J P A, and that was, that was a request we made to make sure that that was, you know, it had, it had to go through consortium.
Because that, you, that's probably saved us some money.
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question. So, Reta and the chief, I totally agree with what the mayor said about, you know, the importance of protecting our city. Please don't get me wrong, I, I definitely want us to be ready just in case. But Reta, my question to you then, since this hasn't come up to the audit, debt and investment committee, is this almost a half a million dollars, right? It's four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I know that our income levels are lower this year because of COVID and the protect, the, the projection is that income will be lower for the next three to five years. So how is this going to impact our budget?
Um, because this is a special tax assessment, Joan, it's. It, it will be, we do have the ability to lean for non-collections on this special tax assessment. And in, it's built through the utility billing right now. And because we aren't in shut offs, however, the tax assessment and the priority pay is the highest priority of payment commit that when a customer pays a bill or short pays, it's the highest priority to be satisfied in our billing system. So I do not expect a downturn, we may have some collection issues as people are not penalized for not paying right now with the COVID. When I say penalized, they are receiving late fees, but they are not receiving turn offs.
Right, and I understand there's quite a few people not paying right now, is that correct?
Um, there are.
Yeah, well, and that's just my question is what happens, you know, what happens if we don't have enough to use? So you're projecting that we will have enough money coming out of measure M and it won't be an impact to our general budget, general fund?
No, the funds from measure H are more than adequate. Recommending financing so that we can keep the cash on hand that we do have, which will come up at a later point with the finance committee. And I think we've got, rates are very favorable right now for lease purchases.
Okay, good, thank you.
Cory, you have a question?
So, one more thing.
Yes.
On our measure C taxes, do we have the option, please fire services of doing less paving to cover anything that might come up?
Measure C is a general tax. So the, the purpose of it was to handle some of the things that we talked about, public safety and paving. But it is not designated specifically to those, so if you needed to or wanted to adjust.
So that's what I'm saying.
If, if need be, we could.
Right, gotcha, right. So instead of six miles of paving, four.
Well, Matt and Ben are on, so they might be able to answer that for us, what do you guys think?
I'm going to refer that right back to the city manager and what stated, the way that, that it's a general fund, it's not. The way that we have it, the way that we utilize it is for police protection and roads. And that's how it was sold and passed.
I thought it was. Never mind.
Yeah, it's roads and, roads and safety, I think is how it was written, wasn't it, Steve?
Safety would, to me, would be fire department as well, so.
It could be, yeah, if it says safety.
Isn't there a specific measure, tax measure that we passed for fire?
Yes.
That's measure H?
So, yeah, there was.
So that's where the, yeah.
Measure H, it's a dedicated fund back in two thousand and five?
Yeah. And I was going to hold this till my commissioner comments, but Reta, you did a great job in researching and finding a very favorable, very favorable, long-term, you know, loan for that. So I want to thank you for that.
Yes, good job.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. All righty, anybody else have any questions? You have any more statements?
No, I just appreciate you taking the time and you asking great questions and we don't take this lightly either, it's not something I planned for. We're very, you know, we have a good relationship with, you know, the, the committee, we understand where we're going with this and we're going to make sure that, you know, we get everything. You know, there's always things that come up that you're not, you don't expect, but in the meantime, I think it's, it's just sooner than what we wanted to do. We wish we could get more for the surplus, but, you know, we got, we have to move, we can't.
Well, like I said, that gentleman losing his house up on the hill, his house was a very expensive house. We look at the money that we're spending, well, he lost almost that much money. And insurance, it became a total fiasco and he actually did not make out in the end of the whole insult for this because it was in the middle of construction and the guy that was doing the construction didn't have the proper insurance to do the thing. So it was not a pretty sight. So this would have been well received on his part, if we would have had it at that point in time.
We had discussions with the person that was in charge of the water supply, the firefighter. Yeah, that would have been a huge test. You know, if you, you can write it off at that point, say, yeah, it's a save one.
One, exactly.
I understand it's a lot of money, but, you know, I'm confident that we have, speaking of Reta, that we have what we need to finish the task.
We're going to think too, is we can assist other departments by having this too, so.
We would have, we would have had it on a slayer fire, we would have had it on a badger fire, we've done a lot with it already. So, you know, the way things have been, we just don't, but be prepared for it.
Well, we're looking at another year, not very pretty as far as drought season again, this sort of water.
Four active wildfires in Southern California right now.
Yep.
Running out of control.
That's crazy, I'll read it this time of year. And we're looking, I'm looking at what we have going on here locally and the amount of precipitation that we have, yeah, we got some coming up, but it's, it's not what we need. Not at all. Anyways, do I hear anybody present a motion on this then, or?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, sorry. Adopt the resolution of the Wairika City Council approving and authorizing acquisition of equipment and execution of all necessary documents for acquiring equipment for the Wairika Volunteer Fire.
Councilman Middleton, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Paul McCoy, a second by Cory Middleton. Roll call, Mr. Baker, please.
Yes, Mayor Pretend Baird.
Aye.
City Councilmember Smith Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye, for sure. Awesome, the motion's carried, thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Awesome, move forward, another thing for the fire department to move forward on, that's awesome, we need. Anything to, to town safe. All righty, we're off to the city manager and staff reports.
Yes, Mayor Member of the Council, I'm going to call on, in this order, we prepared Chris, Lieutenant Chris Betts, Public Works Director Matt Bray and Jerry Lemus, Fire Chief, in that order. So Lieutenant Betts, you're on.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so tomorrow, we do have three officers helping out with the COVID. Just a point of distribution at the fairgrounds. They expect quite a few people, they're actually expecting people to be camped out there as early as zero six hundred in the morning.
Wow.
Till ten A M. Our officers are supposed to meet public health out there at zero seven hundred for briefing and the walk-in vaccinations is supposed to go from ten to four. So expect maybe some delays or some traffic issues out on Fairlane Road. It just depends on, you know, the weather and how many people show up, but they're expecting quite a few and it was, they're expecting over nine hundred vaccinations tomorrow. As we discussed the other day at our meeting, I had our animal control and code enforcement officers go to Lower Green Horn today and we started to take care of the two vehicles that are there next to the trailers, so they've been tagged. And the owners are trying to get. Before we have to tell them. Hear me?
You're starting to fade into a little bit of what we heard you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's being taken care of at Lower Green Horn on a real small scale. Trying to get that stuff cleaned up.
Thank you.
Onto the bad news, we've been extremely busy lately. We had, we've had numerous vehicle pursuits, it seems like as of late. We had a vehicle pursuit over the weekend on Fairlane Road where one of my sergeants had to go foot pursuit and the occupant bailed out with a loaded firearm. Threw the firearm and everything ended up fine. But it's been, it's been pretty crazy out there on the streets with the guys, a lot of, a lot of violence as of late. A lot of use of force going on. As the city council meeting was going, I'd been texting one of my patrol sergeants that's on duty right now. We did have a fatal vehicle versus pedestrian accident in the area of Valero. Steve, I, I'm in the office tomorrow for a little bit. I'll get a press release written and I'll send it to you so you can get it out to the council.
Thank you.
That was tonight, was that tonight?
Forty-five-ish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So they're working that, should be cleaned up by now as far as the accident. So to be clear, if you guys have any questions for me?
Sad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Yeah, Mr. Baker and Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to throw this over to Ben Miller. We've got him online tonight, we can get him unmuted. He has some items to share with you that are, I'm, I'm happy to let him take care of it tonight.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm sitting in the dark, I don't get cell phone service at my house, so I hiked up to one of my favorite spots where I get cell phone service, but. My video is actually on, but it looks like it's pitch black to me.
He can see your teeth when you smile.
Okay, I'm sitting at one of my favorite spots in the world, but I have a lot better news than Chris does, I'm very sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
I was going to report on two positive things. So the first is the animal control fence around the animal control center at the yard. I'm very happy to report that the, the fence has been completed where now the animal control officer can drive their vehicle into an enclosed fence to release whatever dog they have without it being, without the chance of escape and it will allow the animals in there to be able to exercise. So I'm a dog lover and I really like to, to see that for the potential and the improvement for the facility. And then the second one is, we have, in, just to throw a, a thankful note to basic fencing. They did a fabulous job on the fence and it was a pleasure to walk up, watch them work and to see how, how fast and proficient somebody who puts up fences every day can work. Because I've done fences myself and watched people that don't do fences every. how, um, how fast and proficient somebody who puts up fences every day can work, because I've done fences myself and watched people that don't do fences every day work, and it blew me away on their, their speed and proficiency.
Good.
And then, the second project we have going is, um, is our vac truck garage, and we have B and G finish work out of, at Nacalifonia, working on that, and it's been a pleasure to work for them, or work with them, and, um, as of tomorrow, the slab will be completed, they poured, on each side of the slab, they poured, um, each corner has a thirty-six by thirty-six footing, and then the center of each, where the main support beam comes up, a forty-eight by forty-eight inch footing. And so that will be completed tomorrow, and then, I apologize, I don't remember the exact timeframe, but I think it has to cure for, it's between ten and fourteen days, and then they can start erecting the building. So we, we just have progress go, going all throughout our, um, service center, and where we can watch right from, right from my office essentially, and it's been, it's been really nice to see.
Yay.
Great, thank you, anything else?
That's the two big ones, and then, just on a side note, um, working with Chris Betts and, uh, Willow, code enforcement in the animal control center. I've kind of left it, um, Willow and William have been tagging camps, and I've been scheduling a major push to do a cleanup tomorrow, so we're gonna put, um, if nothing comes up, I'm gonna put all hands on deck, and see how far we can make it on a cleanup with all the work that Willow and William have been doing on, on tagging camps, so I'm excited to see how far we get tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Cleaning it up, watch out.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome, does that conclude your reports?
That, that does, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Go home.
You guys have a wonderful evening.
Have a nice, safe hike down the hill.
I got a truck right here.
You could have put a flashlight under your chin.
That'll be scary.
Yeah.
Yeah, stories.
I apologize for the darkness.
That's okay, you're fine.
That's your voice, that's all, now, if, if you don't have one, that's fine.
That was a big roll.
He's already talked a lot tonight.
Yes, he has.
If you've seen the, nevermind, the conversation we had about trying to meet, have me do a video presentation, it wasn't, it wasn't very pretty. I'd best rather be here, but, no, just real quick, our three cadet sleepers, quote-unquote sleepers, are, they're, they're in, they're in-house now, and they're doing a good job, we haven't had them on a lot of calls yet, because they're super busy in their first couple of weeks of the academy, but, um, we'll probably be seeing them around, as soon as I can, I'll get them to a meeting and, you know, just have them come by and say hi, or do it on Zoom, if we can do that, just to, so you can see.
Oh, that'd be cool, yeah.
They're, they're really enjoying it, and, uh, it's gonna be a good thing going forward for us, try to keep them involved most.
That's awesome.
That's all I have for tonight, now, thank you for, for all your good questions, and for getting everything pushed through, I appreciate it, and good things, good thing ahead.
I think so too, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Mayor, that concludes our, uh, reports, for the record, there is not a closed session tonight, so.
Okay, all righty, then, that's no more than, we'll move on to, uh, councilman reports, uh, Mr. McCoy, I'll start with you.
Um, I will, I want to thank, uh, Waireca Police Department for allowing me to ride along Saturday night from seven PM till five AM in the morning with Officer Dirksen, uh, going to observe Officer Dirksen, Officer Elliott, Sergeant, um, Middleton, and Officer Wilson in action at different times, as they backed each other up, um, it was fairly routine, like, I mean, there were a couple of, uh, people that got their, apparently got their, uh, clock knocked off, and we responded to that, some open doors, um, a lot of safety checks throughout, uh, different businesses and different areas and cemeteries.
Oh.
Um, Officer Dirksen and I did a safety check on a couple homeless people that, we assumed they were homeless, they were, they were sleeping, laying, or sitting on a sidewalk, and so he wanted to make sure that they were okay, that they were not hurt, that somebody had pushed him down, had knocked him down, um, kind of thing, and then he shared with me, we drove through the homeless camps, and, uh, got as close as we could, and he was showing some things that would, that I'll share with you when you and I, Steve, and, 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 uh, Acting Chief Betts got together, of how to help with some of that, you know, uh, so I, I'm very thankful to Officer Dirksen, uh, Acting Chief Betts, for, uh, taking me out for his shift.
Pat's, Pat's a good guy to have on your side, I'll tell you what, he's a big boy, and he's, he's the type of guy you want on your side.
And I'm gonna tell you, we were by probably everyone in your home, well, we were by probably every one of your homes that night.
Wow.
Um, he, he's, he's out and about, and he's cruising, if, if it's a boring night like it was, he's cruising through everything and doing checks and, uh, you know, so, I also want to thank Tina from dispatch. So, um, I, I wanted to, uh, thank Redda again for all the work that, she's not here, but for all the work she did on that, I don't know if you took, got to take a look at the loan docs for the, for the fire truck.
Yes.
But she did a good job on that, um, I, I wanted to, Joan had talked about how poorly we're doing this year as a state, however, what's coming out now is that it looks like we're gonna have a surplus. State of California is gonna have a tremendous surplus of money, uh, the tax revenues are a lot higher than they said they were going to be now. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that, I got a chance to see with, along with Councilman Baird, we got a chance to see the new vacuum truck, which is absolutely, I shouldn't say, it's absolutely pretty, it's gorgeous.
We needed it.
I wouldn't want to parallel park it, but it's gorgeous.
But we got to see it, and Tim talked a little bit about it, um, we, um, got to see where the new building is going, and then I was out today, and they've got the concrete all covered, it looks very, very good, that, so I'm appreciative of that, and, and to Matt, and to Ben. Um, I guess the last thing I would say is that I, I have contacted personally each of the companies that has carts out at our yard.
Oh, you did, all right.
And I've contacted them personally twice in the last three weeks.
Really?
As of today, only one company has chosen to come pick their carts up over three weeks. Um, so that'll be a discussion that they all have with the city manager, but, um, yeah, and, and they've all been notified twice personally.
Well, I think it's like we discussed, it's something we need to move forward on as far as getting them to the salvage yard, and if they're not gonna, if they're not gonna respond, if we've given them adequate time, then the next step would be to take them to salvage and, and at least collect some salvage money off of the metal that's worth it, but that's something we gotta discuss, and, and I don't know if that's something we need to, um, take to the next level and, and have some set, set guidelines on that, Steve, or how does that work? To the next level, or is there?
I don't.
Because we don't have anything, do we have anything documentation of how to proceed forward or something like that, I don't think we do.
I know that, I know that the companies have been noticed that that will happen.
Yeah, right.
And I'm not sure under what, what rule that's done, it's kind of the rule of, we have your carts, you have not come to pick them up, same, you must be treating them as trash.
They are, I, I, I didn't share with Steve, but I know that, um, between Will and Willow, they're picking up, up at the rate of anywhere from five to eight or ten a week.
Oh, yeah, easy.
Uh, one day last week, we picked up seven.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know, so at that rate, you're putting about, you're putting between, what, fifty-six and seventy carts out there every week? So we already have like two hundred and some now, two hundred and ten, two hundred and twelve.
That's ridiculous, they gotta do other things.
And, and then when I talked to Linda Williams, uh, from Rayleigh's, she said that a car costs her three to three hundred and fifty dollars a pop, so she's very grateful that we called, um, you know, but some, you know, I mean, it's just.
Well, that's, that's where we started with this whole shopping cart ordinance, and I think it's time that we continue with it again.
And I don't think it's all, I, I'm not blaming it on anybody, but I think you have a lot of people who take them away from the site, I'm not, I'm not even picking on.
No, no.
It could be a, a, a middle-aged house husband like me, that decides to take it away from the side, and doesn't take it back, or leaves it sitting, uh, in front of my house and lets it roll down the streets.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, um, thank you for making those phone calls and checking with people, because.
I'm hoping to pick them up, it's a lot easier for us.
Oh, it'd be a lot easier.
But there should be consequences if they don't do it in a timely manner.
Exactly.
Put a time limit on it.
That's where this ordinance will come into effect.
Depends on whose timeframe they're on, Debbie.
Okay, is that it? Awesome, thank you, Joe, Smith Freeman, I guess you're better up.
Oh, okay, thank you, um, I had a housing, community, and economic development policy committee, um, online, on Zoom this week, and the top six issues that we were discussing, uh, because we set our goals for the year, uh, what we want to pursue, number one is, well, they're not in any particular order actually, but, um, the, um, economic development post-COVID, in other words, we want to work on reviving our economy, uh, Paul, I'm happy to hear that it's already, it sounds like it's already reviving, and maybe things are coming back. Uh, but I do know that, um, our local economic development council is trying to get some of that state funding, but unfortunately, if you're a five oh one C four, the governor has said that you can't receive the funding, so I'm working, uh, with Cal Cities on seeing if we can't, um, overcome that for our area. Also, uh, increase in housing supply, this is a big issue in California because of the lack of building over the years, and I know that we don't, as Cory well knows, uh, we don't have that many houses on the market, right Cory, and it's that way, not just with us, but throughout the state of California, so, uh, we're talking about affordable housing, um, and housing that meets community needs, so, uh, number three, job creation and economic stimulus, we're working on. Number four, regional housing needs assessment, that's RENA, that process, uh, where you can get funding, uh, for housing. Number five, protect and enhance local land use authority, we want to make sure that we want to protect our own, um, our own zoning and our own land use, uh, authority ability. Number six, um, a funding to assist, oh, funding, getting funding to assist small business recovery, uh, from COVID, and there is, uh, there is funding out there, so we just need to get it down to our little businesses. And then, uh, tonight, um, just, uh, I think six o'clock to six eighteen this evening, I just got, um, an email, and that says that it's a FEMA update about reimbursements, and, uh, I don't know if you, I think you all know that, uh, if we have disasters or anything that would impact our general fund because of COVID, we can get reimbursed at seventy-five percent. Well, today, the White House issued a memo on extending federal support to increase reimbursement, and other assistance provided to the state, along with extending federal support to the governor's use of the National Guard to respond to COVID nineteen, um, so notably for cities, the FEMA reimbursement has increased to one hundred percent. So until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, if we do need FEMA funding, we can get it at one hundred percent and not seventy-five percent, meaning we'd have to fund the twenty-five percent out of our own, uh, general fund, so I think that's, I think that's good news, and that's coming from Cal Cities, the League of California Cities, um, pardon?
That's nice, good.
Yeah, I, hopefully, uh, that's a good thing, I'll have to talk to Steve about how we can utilize that, um, and then you all know that there's going to be the big, uh, uh, lineup tomorrow, and I noticed there's a, there's a news thing that came through tonight that said, don't show up at the fairgrounds too early, right Chris, I mean Lieutenant? Yeah, I think that they're predicting that people are gonna start lining up in the wee hours, and they don't have room for them out there, so, uh, hopefully that'll go well. Uh, and the, uh, and the hospital and the clinic are also, um, for, for the older people, they're doing, uh, they're doing the shots, the COVID shots. So, um, we had, uh, we had a pool meeting again this week, um, and, and that's coming along, we've got to get that grant in by March, um, so we're working on that, Art, Arthur, or, I don't know, is Arthur still on, I don't see him, oh, yes, okay, so, um, Arthur, you can jump in anytime if you want to, but we're having another meeting, um.
Skybox.
Scott. What?
I said he's the skybox, we'll call it.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, Arthur is in, Arthur has not left the building, okay, anyway, Arthur, uh, do you remember the name that they came up with, it was kind of a long one, it was the Waireca Splash Center and Something Gardens.
We're, we're just going with them. That sounds good.
It's Na- Native American Gardens, wasn't it?
No, it wasn't Native American, I don't think, Native Gardens, that's it.
Native Gardens, there you go.
Gardens, yeah, so, uh, and the Native Gardens is like something for the future, because this funding won't cover building gardens, um, so they're, they're thinking that in the future nonprofits can help with raising money for that, um, we're mainly, um, focusing on the pool itself and the building, uh, and the parking lot. And we're also looking at, uh, solar, to see if we could get the solar energy to power it. So that's all, you all know that Lolo was canceled this week, so we'll see when that's rescheduled for. Hopefully, when everybody gets their shots, and then, you know, we're all gonna be, we're gonna have superpowers, and we won't have to worry about this.
Yeah, sounds good, in the perfect world we live in, huh?
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, that was awesome.
All right, Mr. Middleton?
Okay, Matt, and, so yeah, when I got here, I was telling you guys I had come by, where the woman got hit on Main Street, it was so sad, I was devastated to see that, so, with his family, it was just so sad to see everybody out there just standing around him, and so, um, so that was hard to see, so definitely, my thoughts were with his family and friends and everybody, it was sad.
And that's one of those things, I hope, as, as a council, we can address, when the highway does come through, because that's a problem place, we've talked about it numerous times.
Yeah, um, so I started with my new council member bootcamp, I guess what you call it, today, I'm learning lots, I guess, and, uh, but I had a laugh, because when they're doing the, the skit, you know, dysfunction junction is what they call it.
Oh, yeah.
Two, two of the, two of the members said things that Joan has said, and Paul has said, one was, you know, it's all COVID-related, so it's different from when you guys attended it, because they're talking about COVID and how things have changed with city council meetings, but one of the persons was saying, oh, this COVID's gonna be done after elections, I laughed, because I thought of Paul.
That's Paul.
And then, and then one of the ladies was talking, and she interrupted somebody and said, well, remember, if we're not, um, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, so I remember Joan, so funny that, talking about all these statements that people have said, so I was laughing to myself, my dog's probably looking at me like it's crazy, but I was laughing, so, uh, I, I started that, um, so, learning to be a good council member, and, I guess, um, so I was at a meeting with Debbie last night, so some good news is our, our friends of the Fair Board, and, um, Cliff Munson was there, and he said our fair will continue this year, because he figured out it will happen no matter if it's in restrictions or not, because he figured, for, I guess it's for a amusement park or whatever event, how many people he has in per day, and what he's allowed, he said, even, he'll, he's still way under, no matter how many come through there in that four-day period, he still falls with that, under the amount of people, so he said it's gonna continue, and it's on calendar for the eighth through the eleventh, something like that.
I, I typed all of the notes this morning, and I, okay, done.
I think it's August eighth through the eleventh, so that was good news, um, you know, I think citizens would be happy to have them back, and, um.
Yeah.
The sign is up on the building.
Oh, it is, yeah, it's up on the building, right? I think it's, whatever, it was a long meeting last night.
Oh, boy.
Um, yeah. Guys, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, notified again of no, uh, LAFCO meeting, but the C two C board meeting is starting up again, and we're gonna try it Tuesday, and the, uh, college is, uh, allowing us to meet in their room, and we get to have one of their volunteers run our Zoom meetings, so it's, it's really slick up there, I'll tell you, so it's really, really nice, but, um, let's see, what else? I think that's it.
Short and sweet.
It's short and sweet, thank you.
Thank you, um, am I gonna go into a lot of detail in this, but we have, uh, we still are doing the homeless, the PIT point in time count, starting Monday, basically Monday evening. Now, the, just to clarify, we're just only doing sheltered, uh, people only, um, unfortunately, we do, can't do the unsheltered ones, so that will still be going on next week, unfortunately, the way we have to, to do that is now to, it's the behavioral health, uh, social domestic violence, six, uh, six zones, um, Waireca Resource Center, there's a number of, of different entities that have. Wyriche Resource Center, there's a number of, of different entities that have basically vouchers for motels for homeless people and number of different other things too that fall into that. Some hospitals, state hospital, the jail actually falls into that too. So there's a number of different things, so there's still gonna be some numbers brought in, they're gonna take our numbers that we actually acquired last year for our homeless, which is good, because we had decent, obviously that would be more this year, but at least it's the numbers that we can use. So it's still gonna go forward, definitely a lot more complicated and, and actually I'll be glad to get it done and over with. And looking forward to hopefully this summer, and I actually brought it up to our group, that possibly doing a summertime point in time count. I think, I think we have the local support on that if we are past this COVID far enough where we can, so we'll see what happens there. Definitely want to thank Arthur for being involved in the meeting tonight, nothing against you, Steve, but we got the meeting up and going, that's all I care. To you guys.
We're just missing you from your IT duty, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, I, I'm grateful as well.
I am very grateful because I know we would, we would be hearing about it from the citizens if we had to do another messed up meeting.
Thank you, Arthur.
Yes, thanks you guys. Lieutenant Betts, thank you for jumping in there on those, on the, some of the cleanup of these camps. And also Ben, we're getting in there, doing these cleanup of these camps too. We're not trying to, remember, we're not trying to, to kick out the homeless and not give them a place to stay. We're just being, clean up the camps and make sure that they're safe and everybody, our citizens are safe, that's the main thing, we're keeping everybody safe. Okay.
And our town looking clean.
Safe and clean, yeah.
Safe and clean.
Oh, I'd like to, a couple, you know, a couple of things. One, talk about, and we need to talk to Dawn about our attorney, but further discussion on our, on our ordinance for the shopping cart and I'll be glad to give them a call. It was posted last week and we will, we will converse this week for sure. And I was also like to find on the Siski Media Council, the money that we fork out for that, I'd like to have some type of breakdown if we could just so the rest of council can see and I'm sure, I'm, I'm a little confused on what we're actually paying them to do. And I, I don't know if anybody else is, I know Cory just coming into a situation, he probably doesn't know a lot about it either as far as what the Siski.
We can do that, Matt.
That would be great, just so we, just so we have an update of what they're actually doing for us and stuff and, and what kind of.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also see us at some time in the not convinced future, bring up the fence issue again so we can finally get something to the planning commission so we can get some, you know, and have them look at it, you know.
Yeah.
Or, or make recommend, or get their recommendations, you know.
For clarity, just for those that haven't lived through it, are we talking about the fences that are too high?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And how we grandfather, blah, 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 blah.
Right, yeah, that is, that is something we, we talked about before, but we never did.
Does that have further, is that correct? Yeah, does that have to come from the commission to us though, correct? Is that correct?
Well, you can do things in a lot of different ways, however, it is a zoning issue and so that's why it was taken to the planning commission. And we did have a couple of conversations about it, it is a very, very tricky subject because of a whole lot of things that involve fence regulations and the fact that people have built them in the past and believe that they're legal. Because it's the other ones, so.
Well, is that something that, that the mayor also will need at some point in time, that'll be something the attorney has to go through?
Because when, whatever, whatever comes out of the situation will end up being, I, I suspect that it would have to be some kind of ordinance as opposed to a resolution or a policy, so.
And I'm not, nobody's looking, at, at least from my point of view, at telling people to take them down. That's not what we're looking at.
Right.
We're looking at going forward.
Correct.
And, and what we do if they have to replace an entire fence, that's all we're looking at.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I want to be very clear about that, okay?
Are you talking about height of fencing or, or distance from the sidewalk or?
Only both, basically, yeah. Yeah, they're mainly.
In residential, right?
In residential, correct.
Why did this come up?
Residential, because we have quite a number, we probably have forty fences to violate the height regulation alone.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'd say at least, yeah.
The difference was it claimed or something? Or what?
Yeah, we actually have, we did get some. Come up for now off and on since I was on planning commission.
Well, I remember talking about it when I was on planning commission too.
It's been well over. Thank you, sorry.
Yep, no, that's, and actually that's, that's the end of my report, I was telling you it's short and sweet, so if there's any other comments, we're not going to go for the session tonight and meeting adjourned.